Welcome to this evening's meeting. Before we call the meeting order, we're going to ask David Slatter to come up. It leads with invocation. David is with Grace First Presbyterian Church. Welcome back, sir. It's always good to see you.
Thank you, sir. Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for beautiful weather. We thank you for just the opportunity that we have to enjoy your creation. Lord, we also do lift up the people down on the coast to you. Pray that you would keep them safe as a hurricane approaches. Lord, we just ask that this evening that you would give guidance and wisdom to these folks here that you've called to be in this place, serve this community of Weatherford, and that we may all live in solidarity and that we all may live as your disciples and as we live as your lights in the world. And we pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you again, sir. 6:31 at this time, I'll call the meeting order and announce that we do have a quorum present, all council members are in attendance this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Be led this evening by Councilman Tiscus.
If you're able to stand, would you please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, sir. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hottop.
So we have one. So we started, it actually started yesterday, and it'll run through this Saturday, and it's an event at the Weatherford Park County Animal Shelter, and it's clear to the shelter. And so that's an event that actually started back in 2013, and nationwide that event has had tremendous impact on finding homes for animals. So nationwide, there's been approximately 435,000 animals have been adopted through events just like this. It is the biggest event that happens for the shelter each year. There's approximately 400 animals that find new homes through that event. And we have, of course, a very talented staff and amount of volunteers, of approximately 100 people that worked that event. And actually, the mayor and I were there yesterday and took a photo with some animals and got, I think that's posted on Facebook and other things, and very well received for what those folks do down there. And really, it's by appointment only this year, and so surprisingly, all the appointments are booking up very quick for that event. So certainly lucky to have the talented staff down there, and it's a great event.
Did you take that kitty home or not?
I had a few requests for it.
Okay, okay, I bet so. It was cute. Alrighty, any other items, council? Item five on the agenda, Presentations and Proclamations 5A, is Presentation of Environmental Project of the Year Award from the Texas Chapter of the American Public Works Association for the Holland Lake Corridor Preservation Project. Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council, Chad Marburg with Capital Projects. Proud to present our Holland Lake Channel project as APWA Environmental Project of the Year for the state of Texas. It was selected for its multi-dimensional approach to environmental preservation and its innovative watershed management, including the facilitation of our Green Belt Trailway, the Trails Phase Two project. So I've got a short overview video.
Love to hear it.
So with that, want to thank you for your continued support for the preservation of watersheds and the natural corridors through our community. Without this long-term revision, projects like Holland Channel would not be possible.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Rewards are always great. It seems like we, once or twice a month, we get one. It's great. Representing our citizens well. 5B is to issue a proclamation for Pray Weatherford Day, council. We have a proclamation read. If you would, please join us down front or join me down front. I guess earlier this week or late last week, received a communication from one of our council members, and they said, I've got an idea. I'm not sure if it was an original idea or he or she had seen it somewhere else, but I thought it was a great idea. And I said, hey, you know what? Put out some feelers to council, check the pulse, and let me know what you come back with. And in about 15 or 20 minutes, everybody on this team was on board with this idea completely. And so tonight, I'm asking the council member, our team member that came up with the idea, Jeff Robinson, and he's going to read the proclamation and has the full support of the council. We've all signed it. And so it's a proclamation for Pray Weatherford Day. Councilman Robinson, do you mind, sir?
Absolutely. I am going to say one thing real quick, is that it was not an original idea. Someone in our community reached out with the idea that another city had done something similar and asked if we would be willing to do it. And I thought it was a great idea. I mean, there's absolutely power in prayer, and through prayer, there's things that can be accomplished that man can't. And so when I reached out to all the council, everyone was quick. And then, but this had to be put together, and I called and talked to Melinda, and she put this together from a call about lunchtime on Wednesday, when the agenda's normally out on Wednesday, and got it all put together. So anyway, it's definitely a team effort here, but I am honored to read it. And this is a proclamation, let me get this here so I don't bobble too bad. The City Council of the City of Weatherford, Texas hereby proclaims August 26, 2020 as Pray Weatherford Day. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has caused great economic harm, putting people out of work, closing businesses, and hardship to many residents of Weatherford. And whereas COVID-19 interrupted the education of the children in Weatherford and put educators at risk. And whereas throughout the history of Weatherford, the state of Texas and our nation people have turned to God in prayer to bring healing and deliverance where human efforts have failed. And whereas August 26, 2020 shall be designated as Pray Weatherford Day, a day of prayer for the eradication of COVID-19 from the city of Weatherford. And whereas residents of Weatherford are encouraged to pray in place, whether at home, at work, or at school, at the noon hour on August 26, 2020. And whereas houses of faith are encouraged to ask their people to pray at noon on August 26, 2020. And whereas all are encouraged to unite in prayer, humbly asking God to heal Weatherford. And whereas let us also rededicate ourselves to bring healing to the sick, comfort to the broken-hearted, help to the needy, wisdom to our children, hope to the hopeless, and unity to the city of Weatherford. Now therefore, the city, excuse me, now therefore, the Weatherford City Council does hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 26, 2020 as Pray Weatherford Day in the city of Weatherford.
We appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
People in the room appreciate it, and the citizens appreciate it too, sir. Item six on the agenda is Consent Agenda Items, council. There are six A, B, C, D, and E. Can we hear those as a group, or do we need to split off anything? Nothing. We'll entertain those as a group. There's a motion for approval of six A, B, C, D, and E from Kevin Cleveland, second from Mayor Protem. There is a discussion before we call for a vote. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Consent Agenda Items pass 5-0. Item seven on the agenda is Public Hearings. 7A is to hold a public hearing on the voluntary annexation of approximately 5,100 feet of roadway of the East Loop, being an approximate 25.785 acre tract of land situated in the J.M. Roof Survey Abstract Number 2256, the Johnson-Woosley Survey Abstract Number 1641, and the Thomas Jackson Survey Abstract Number 745, Parker County, Texas, and being all or a portion of those tracts of land described in documents number 2019-00840, 2017-30332, 2018-24870, 2017-31699, 2017-31513, and 2019-16683 of the deed records of Parker County, Texas, and a portion of Farm and Market Road 730 to enlarge and extend the boundary limits of the city. Mr. Hottop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, James Hottop. So tonight is the first of two public hearings for the voluntary annexation of this roadway. And so we do have the county consent order attached. The second public hearing will be August 31st at 5:30. There'll also be adoption of the, or the reading of the ordinance on August 31st. So just a public hearing tonight. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Any questions on this item? No action tonight. We do have to have a public hearing, no. This time, we'll open up a public hearing on item 7A specifically. If anybody would like to come forward on this item, please do so at this time. 7A, we're going to close the public hearing on item 7A. Council, there is no action on the item. If there are no questions, we'll move on to 7B. Okay, 7B on the agenda is hold a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance O2020-41, request for conditional use permit for a feed and grain store, farm supply store located at 2610 South Main Street, being a 6.205 acre portion of land, described the deed as 6-J building limit, limited partnership, as recorded in document number 201624424, excuse me, I'm going to start over, 201624995, official public record, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, CUP 2020-0008. Good afternoon, Kettner.
Mayor and council, you have before you in your packets this request for this rezoning, or the conditional use permit request, as outlined in your staff report, and you have a complete staff report in your packets that outline the request being presented to you this evening. This went, staff recommendation was approval with the recommended conditions as outlined in the staff report. This did go before the Planning Commission at their August 12th meeting, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 7-0 to approve the conditional use permit with recommendations as proposed by staff. And also want to call your attention to figures two and three, which outline this, these are comments that came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which staff would recommend these be added as conditions. The building shows the outline of the, of how the building will be constructed on this site as an elevation for you, and the materials associated with that construction, as well as the construction of the fence that will be parallel to the street will be constructed as shown in figure two. And staff recommends that figure two and three be added as a condition with the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any.
Any question for Mr. Kettner on item 7B? We do have to have a public hearing for this. We do have a speaker card here in just a moment, too, after that. And Mr. Kettner, possibly you might come up afterwards if we have questions. This time, we'll have a public hearing on item 7B. We'll call from anybody from the floor first before we have our speaker come up that has filled out the card. Alrighty, we'll go to our speaker cards first. The first one will be Mr. Shannon Ave. Shannon, let's see, it's hard to recognize her better than I saw her. How are you, sir?
Doing well, sir.
If you get settled in, identify yourself, and we'll give you a stick to three minutes if you can, sir, please.
Shannon Ave, live at 140 Quill Ridge, Noda North. I'm an engineer for the project. What we're presenting here is a feed store, Russell Feed Store. If you're familiar with, there's a relatively new one that's gone in on Camp Bowie or Spur 580. We're looking at doing something very similar to that store here, the same articulated roof, same stone facade. That's what we're looking at. We're trying to bring a very nice feed store to this location on the site. We've been looking at opportunities to develop this site for quite a while, and what we think we have here is the opportunity to bring the feed store in. One of the suggestions by staff is to put fencing on the north side if we can't, for screening, if we can't save the trees. And if you look at the site plan, one of the things you'll notice is there's a lot of trees and a lot of area that we're not disturbing in the six acres that make up, makes up the site. We're leaving as many trees there as we can. There's also some nice oaks in front of the building, and we're going to do the best we can to leave those oaks. So we're going to try to preserve what we have while we, while we develop the site. And I'd be glad to answer or attempt to answer any questions you have. We also have the developer here, Mr. Kenny Russell. We have the contractor, and we also have the manager of the Camp Bowie stores. Glad to address any comments or concerns that you have.
I know Mr. Russell has a speaker card. He'll be next. Do we have any specific questions for Mr. Ave? Thanks for your willingness to come forward, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Russell, Kenny Russell. Thanks for being here. And once you get settled, Mr. Russell, you can let us have your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes. Thanks for being here.
Kenny Russell. My address is 5710 Jacksonville Highway, Fort Worth, Texas. Mayor, council, city staff, I appreciate you giving me time to be here, be here. I'm not sure how much y'all know about us, but we have eight stores currently. We are a small independent mom and pop type shop, but we, in our industry, we're the, I think, the third largest independent feed store in Texas, and we are building, this will be our ninth store, and this will also be our biggest and our best. And as we've, as we've built more and more stores, we've made it nicer and nicer and nicer, and we're trying to. This one will be the accumulation of several ideas we've had in the past, and I'm here to answer any questions you have about me or my company. And I have also Land and Banks are a contractor here, have a store manager, Rock, who lives in the area, who'll be managing the store. So anything y'all have, we're just proud to be a part of the community.
Any questions for Mr. Russell? We appreciate your willingness to be here. Just a quick question, what would, what's your timeline, estimated timeline, timeline on construction, assuming, pending approval?
Pending approval, you know, it's always...
Five years, one year, as soon as possible?
We're going to start pushing dirt as soon as we can get our permits from y'all.
Okay.
Immediately, okay? So, yeah, we want to be, my goal is to be open spring of next year. I have a big four by eight signs that's coming soon, pending approval of this, of course, the spring of 2021, so, yeah.
Appreciate your willingness to be here. Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Russell, thank you for your interest in bringing your business to Weatherford. We're looking forward to, pending approval, of course, but we're looking forward to continue to work with you. So we're excited that you want to come to Weatherford. It's a great place.
Thank you. In our industry, Weatherford is the mecca of feed business. And I know in our trade area, there's nine other feed places to buy feed, and to, for us to be successful, we've got to be the biggest and the best, and we're sure going to try our best. If not, I wouldn't take a check from you, you know what I mean? But, yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Russell? Thank you, sir, for being here. Appreciate it. Council, any discussion on the item? Staff did recommend that we possibly consider figure two and figure three, as Planning and Zoning had mentioned. I did have one thing I wanted to bring with the offer discussion. In the past, the use of temporary and long-term banners has been a challenge, so maybe we could consider that after we close the public hearing. Anybody else from the floor on 7B? All right, this time, we'll close the hearing on, public hearing on 7B. Discussion, questions, comments?
I'm with you on our family's suggestion from P&amp;Z, as well as the attachment to elevation illustrations. I would think it might, would be a better solution on the banners to address that in a larger scale through some of our codes and ordinances and things.
I believe those are, those are in place. The intention was to have a secondary documentation on the record that those have been discussed at adoption of the zoning, certainly an option. We've had a challenge with those in other places in the past. And what I was thinking, is this an opportunity to do that on the record, provide some redundancy for reinforcement if needed? But I know that that does, that does exist a little bit through our codes. Just a suggestion. Comments, other things?
Yeah, I had a question for Caleb. The recommendation for the fence, if you would explain that a little bit to me, and the reason I'm asking is because this isn't the only feed store in town, but I don't think any of the others have a fence to that magnitude. And, you know, I think it's a great-looking fence, and if they're happy to build it and all that, that's great, and forget the question, but I think, I think I probably understand that it's probably for screening of display possibly, or whatever, but if you would explain the rationale behind the requirement of the fence.
Yes, one of the big concerns that we've had in our three previous conditional use permits for outdoors display, particularly for, for farm supply stores, has been the outdoor display areas. This location is actually right up against the highway, against the street, and the display area is adjacent, as shown on the site plan. That area is adjacent to it, and that was our, our main concern. The other locations were set back further, the previous two conditional use permits that were recently done. One of the conditions that was placed on, on the one was that they move it back further away when they redid, and they're in the process of redoing their fencing right now at one location. So they didn't have to do it necessarily to this magnitude on it, but since this was adjacent to the street, and this has been a concern that we've heard from the council and the, and the Planning Commission in the past, that, that we wanted to make sure that was addressed with the outside storage. And, and I know they're wanting to be a good community partner, and to, to do that, we've expressed that to them, and I believe that was expressed to them in the Planning Commission as well, and they're being a good partner in, in doing this because of the concerns that we've had in the past.
Well, the reason, I guess, for my comment, I'm excited to see him want to be here, and I certainly would like to see him be here, just, and fully supportive of our initiative to clean things up up and down Fourth Highway. They're, they're a little south of 20. I just don't want to hold them to a higher standard than what we're holding the others. But that being said, it looks really nice, so.
Great feedback, Mr. Robinson. Any other comments related to 7B? This is an action item, council, if this is your pleasure, if it's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion to approve with the five listed conditions from P&amp;Z, as well as the attached to elevation, the CUP.
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Cleveland, as stated, you're duplicating. Okay, great. Any discussion on 7B before we move forward? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on 7B at this time. Get your touchscreens when you have an opportunity. 7B passes 5-0. 7C is to hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance O2020-43 for a zoning district change from C1 Commercial to R1 One Family Residential and a conditional use permit to permit an 810 square foot shed and porch for the lot at 702 and 702 and a half South Elm Street, being a lot PT5 Block 11, Bracene Subdivision, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2020-0011, and CUP 2020-0007. Welcome back.
Mayor and council, you have before you this request for the rezoning and conditional use permit, as outlined in the complete staff report in your packets. This includes staff recommended approval of the zoning change, as well as recommendation of approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the three conditions outlined in, in your staff reports. This also went before the Planning and Zoning Commission at their August 12th meeting for, and was voted six to one to approve the zone change and conditional use permit for the accessory structure at this location. If you have any questions, be glad to answer any.
Any questions on 7C for Mr. Kettner before we have our public hearing? Hearing none, we'll open up a public hearing at this time on 7C. Is there anybody here that wants to speak specifically on this item? If there is, please come forward at this time. 7C, this time we'll close the public hearing. Council, any discussion or questions on this item? Hearing none, entertain a motion if that's your pleasure. Motion for approval was presented by Mr. Robinson, second by Matt Tiscus. Any questions or discussion before we call for a vote on 7C? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay. 7C passes 5-0. 7D, hold a public hearing and consider adoption of ordinance O2020-42, repealing Title 12 of the City Code of Weatherford, save and accept section 12-512, I want to repeat that, 12-5-2, and adopting the Title 12 as appended to the ordinance, save and accept 12-4-100, which is recalcification of 12-5-2, and adopting the Administrative Rules for Implementation of Title 12, Chapter 4, Sections 102 through 103, also known as Landscape and Tree Manual, MCA 2020-0001. Welcome back, sir.
Mayor and council, you have before you, this has been a little bit of time in coming before you, I think over a year in time has passed since the, I think initially began with discussions with the council and Planning Commission. Staff, when moving forward with this request, went to the Development Advisory Committee and took these items to them over the last year. This was also, we also have multiple public hearings seeking input from the public into amending these zoning regulations. And we also went through the Planning Commission and have their recommendation as enclosed in your, in your staff report. The suggested actions, as this went before the Planning Commission and is recommended approval by planning staff, and this went at their August 12th meeting, and in that, they discussed, the Planning Commission recommended the following changes, and I'm going to hit on these before I kind of go into the, this is a 215-page document of a lot of information regarding the, what we see and making sure that the vision comes to pass that was adopted in 2018 in the general plan. But the Planning Commission did recommend 6-0 to approve zoning regulations, including any grammatical formatting or minor adjustments required for legal and/or planning staff with additional amendments to address the following concerns. Item one was the lot size for the R1 district. There was a discrepancy in the, in the regulations currently with the lots being 50 by 110, but the lot size was 6,500 square feet. And so the staff changed that to make it 5,500 square feet, but the Planning Commission recommended a larger lot to 6,000 square feet, which would be a 60 by 100 lot for the new R1 district. They also recommended a minimum lot size for accessory dwelling units. This was one of the items that was discussed in the, in their meeting, which included adding a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet for... minimum lot size of six thousand square feet for accessory dwelling units and a table that breaks down the lot sizes for each that would be required. Also, item three was they wanted to add North Main Street to the commercial corridor overlay areas, as outlined in the joint meetings, as wanting to bring in those items that were in our plan and put them into the zoning so those can be moved forward into making the community's vision move forward. Item four was adding a method for the Planning and Zoning Commission to receive updates for special use permits and other updates as regards to planning and zoning, and that was also added to the director's requirements in the planning and zoning regulations. We tried to meet all the requirements that were outlined over the last three joint meetings, and I'm not going to go over all of those in detail because the major ones that we focused on was the residential areas, increasing, creating two new single-family subdivisions, seven point five and eight point five, with a seventy five hundred square foot lot and an eighty five hundred square foot lot respectively. And the other part of that was creating that design for our neighborhoods. And I know this went over in quite detail in the Planning Commission, and I know you've probably all had a chance to watch that video and the minutes from that. This shows the outline of the changes that will be occurring as far as de-emphasizing the garages and how those will be placed on new lots moving forward. And there were significant changes, as we've discussed in multiple meetings, and I'm going to leave it to you if you have any questions about any of those items. But I do want to draw attention to the fact that this is a living document, that the request of the council and the Planning Commission is, is that we want to review this in about three months and see where we are and take any direction that we may have seen that we need to add, change, or modify in that timeframe and move forward with it. Again, some of the big changes, we did include food trucks. That will still take another amendment to the municipal code before that becomes fully effective with these regulations. R one zoning district requirements are going to be limited to only the areas outlined in the general plan for that higher density uses. And we included the minor changes to the sign regulations. This won't have any major impact on the R one districts right now. The impact that it will have if adopted would be immediate change would be the landscape requirements in residential areas to, again, have an impact on our neighborhoods, which increases the number of trees from currently a minimum of two lots, or two trees, one and a half inch caliper, to either a six inch caliper, single tree, or multiple trees at a minimum of three inch caliper to equivalent of ten inches for the lot. You have any questions, be glad to go over anything you'd like.
Any questions for Mr. Kettner before we have our public hearing? Lots of work, many meetings on this process. Any feedback, questions? Thank you for your efforts on this, sir. This time we're going to have a public hearing on item seven D. We do have one speaker card before we call Mr., excuse me, that is not seven D. We're going to have a public hearing on item seven D. We do not have a speaker card. Anybody on seven D from the floor? Public hearing. Seven D. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on item seven D. Counsel, any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Kettner and your team for your work on this project. It's been a big time-consuming project, so thank you.
And again, as you said, it's a working document, so when we go through an evaluation period, if there's opportunities for improvement, which I'm sure always exists in everybody's business in life, and we can take a look at those down the road, so. Counselor asked, this is recommended for approval. Do see a motion from Mayor Pro Tim for approval, seconded by Jeff Robinson. Any further discussion before we call for a vote? Seven D, we'll call for a vote at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Passes five zero. Item eight on the agenda is regular agenda items. Eight A is consider request for a final plat for a one lot at one seven two four East Bankhead Drive in the city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD two zero two zero dash zero zero three nine.
And council, you have before you this request for a final plat for a single lot with the nine conditions as placed by the staff and the Planning Commission. This was recommended approval with these recommended changes or conditions. And at the August twelfth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously seven oh with all members present at that time. If you have any questions, be glad to answer any.
Any questions on eight A before we call for a vote? Hearing none, entertain a motion if that's your pleasure on eight A. Motion for approval by Matt Tiscus, seconded by Jeff Robinson. Any questions or comments before we call for a vote? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote on eight A. Eight A passes five zero as presented. Eight B, consider request for a final plat for nine residential lots at one four zero one and one three five five North Lake Drive in their extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD two zero two zero dash zero zero four one. Welcome back.
Yes, Mayor and council, this also is a final plat request located in the ETJ area. This also went for the Planning and Zoning Commission at their August twelfth meeting and was recommended by staff and the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this final plat with the six conditions as outlined in their complete staff report in your packet. If you have any questions, be glad to answer any.
Questions for Mr. Kettner on eight B? Staff recommends approval with the conditions that are listed in your packet. Eight B, motion for approval by Mr. Robinson as presented, sir?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second by Kevin Cleveland. Any discussion on the item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on eight B at this time. Indicate yea or nay, please. Eight B passes five zero. Eight C, consider request for final plat approval for the Eureka Townhome Edition, fifty-three lots on thirteen point eight six nine acres situated in the John E. Miller survey abstract eight nine zero, city of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, SBD two zero two zero dash zero zero four zero. Welcome back, and I think this may be your last time tonight, right?
Yes. All right, Mayor and council, you have this request for this final plat as well before you for the Eureka Town Edition three lots. This did go, is recommended approval with the eleven conditions as outlined in your staff report. At the August twelfth, two thousand and twenty meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission also unanimously passed a motion to approve the plat with the conditions specified by staff, items one through eleven. We'll say that item one was the item that had the most discussion, as you looked at the minutes on that, which is a lot that the city does not have the capabilities of desiring because it's not buildable. And so that is one of the conditions and remains. Any questions?
Questions on eight C, we do have a speaker card on this one that I tried to jump to earlier. Any questions for Mr. Kettner? All right, we do have a speaker card for Mr. Scott Crawford. Scott, are you with us tonight, sir? Good to see you. Once you get settled up here, if we can have your name and address, if you can stick close to three minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My name is Scott Crawford. I reside at twelve four oh nine Bellaviny Drive, Fort Worth, Texas. I'm with Barrett Hampton Brown. We provided the engineering survey on this property. I realize this is in a public hearing, so I just want to make myself available if you had questions.
Appreciate that. Any questions for Mr. Crawford? I did have a comment I'd ask you to deliver back, that I am extremely impressed with the quality of that development so far. They put in a very, very nice exterior fencing component. They have trails that are leading to the Green Belt Trailway. They put in exterior landscaping, and I'm very excited about seeing the permanent structures match that quality. I know they will, but very excited about seeing that project continue.
I will pass that on, and thank you for saying that. This has been one of the fun projects to be involved with, so.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Eight C is recommended for approval as presented by staff. Is there any discussion, counsel, before we call for a vote? Hearing none, there's a motion by Kevin Cleveland for approvals as presented, sir, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder. Any discussion before we call for a vote on eight C? Hearing none, we'll take a vote at this time on eight C. Please indicate yea or nay. Passes five zero. Eight D, receive recommendation regarding funding outside agency request for the city's fiscal year twenty-one budget. Ms. Doss, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Jessica Doss, Finance Director. We'll get through there. So tonight I'll be giving a quick review of the general and hotel fund request that we've received before turning the floor over to you for a discussion and a vote. So each year, the city of Weatherford receives requests from local organizations for distributions from the general fund and hotel occupancy tax revenue. Staff facilitates this request process and provides the applications to council who funds the requests at their discretion. So for the general fund, we have received a request from the Casa Hope for Children, Children's Advocacy Center, Freedom House, Mano Storehouse, and Parker County Committee on Aging for a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. For the hotel fund, we've received requests from the Chamber of Commerce and the Doss Heritage Foundation. I would like to note, though, that we have included the ninety-six thousand dollars for the Chamber of Commerce in the proposed budget. As in the past, we've kind of considered this more of a partnership rather than a grant. However, we have required the chamber to fill out the application, and so that's why we've included in this discussion presentation. So at this time, I'd like to ask council to determine which organizations and to what extent they would like the city to support financially in FY twenty.
Counsel, staff's looking for feedback and ultimate approval of whatever the structure is on the item. Any discussion or comments?
I don't think the makeup of the council's changed a whole lot. I think everybody knows where my thought was many years ago when we negotiated this down from a full day to a half. I'm always a fan of, or I still believe that tax dollars shouldn't be taken from somebody and then given to charity. However, this is still a negotiated number that we've come down to. It's far below what we negotiated, so I'm not one to stir the pot this year on it. But I'd be interested, I mean, if anybody else has to change their heart along the way, I'm still on the same side of the fence I've always been on.
Well, appreciate you sharing that. We want to hear what everybody has to say if you have an opinion on it. So anybody else?
I would just say, I think, I don't see it as charity. I think I see it as a, these institutions help reduce the funds we have to expend in both our police department and other areas that cost the city, and this is a cost beneficial thing as well as investing in our city.
Good feedback. Anybody else?
Were there any major changes from the previous year? I didn't go back and look at it.
Last year, we did have the, one of them did not submit it, but this year they did. I believe it was, the Casa Hope for Children did not, but the makeup of it was the same.
Historically, until several years ago, we were doing the full days is what we had available. I think we cut it back to a half a day, and this is far, far less than that, so.
Good information, another good question. Anybody have comments? I believe you're looking for a recommendation tonight from council on this.
Yes, sir.
Counsel's staff has presented to use some data. It's very close to what we've done in the past, or at least last year while I was mayor. If there's no other recommendations, this is up for your approval if you can support it.
I support this.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Sure.
Mayor Pro Tim makes a motion, Matt Tiscus provides a second. Any comments, further comments on the item? Before we call for a vote, Councilman Cleveland, your comments are duly noted. Appreciate it, sir. Call for a vote at this time on eight D. Eight D passes five zero. Ms. Doss, thank you for that. Item nine on the agenda, staff reports nine A, update regarding public, educational, and governmental PEG programming fees. Mr. Rexro, welcome, sir. We need to put a time limit on you?
You probably should.
Get the gavel out, right?
Let's address timing real quick before we get started. I got to tell you, you nailed this down to exactly a year to come back with.
He gave us his word he would, didn't he?
He did. I mean, it's been sitting on the side of my desk with a little date on it.
Fulfill my promise. Well, Mayor, members of council, Blake Rexro, Director of Communications and Marketing, last year I came before you requesting approval to reinstate our PEG fee collections. This request was approved and collection began on October first of two thousand and nineteen from our current, from our cable provider. As part of that discussion, I made a commitment to provide a one-year update and provide this council with solid data, data that we did not have during that time. With that being said, I am pleased to provide the following information to better answer your questions from our meeting last year and answer any new questions you may have today. But first, please allow me to briefly review what PEG fees are, not only for ourselves, but for our cable viewers at home who may have missed last year's meeting on August thirteenth. PEG fees are remitted by cable providers to the city for capital expenditure related to PEG channel operations, and the city has sole authority to determine how the PEG fees are to be used. There is no requirement that the PEG fees be spent in the year in which they are received. Hence, there is the possibility of accruing PEG fees over time to establish a PEG reserve fund and for future uses on large-scale capital projects related to PEG channels. Let's dive into the data for two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, if you will. Our collections for two thousand and nineteen, twenty fiscal year are broken down in the chart before you. One housekeeping item before I continue. You will notice that our first collection states quarter four. That is due to the fact that the cable providers have a different fiscal year than the city of Weatherford. So with that being said, our first collection is indicated on quarter four as reported by the cable providers. The gross revenues of the cable providers was approximately one point three million dollars, and this trend continued for quarter one, but dropped to approximately one point two million for quarter two. In correlation, you will notice on the far right column, our collections are actual collections based on the one percent fee of the gross revenues. In quarter four and one, we collected approximately thirteen thousand dollars individually and approximately twelve thousand five hundred for quarter two. We are currently in quarter three and anticipate receiving those collections in mid-November. However, we do project that we will collect around fifty-three thousand dollars this fiscal year in PEG fees. During our meeting on August thirteenth, thirteenth, excuse me, two thousand and nineteen, this council had specific questions regarding the number of customers, individual cost, and value. Based on our collected data, the average monthly bill for a cable customer is approximately one hundred and sixty dollars. The reason I say approximate is due to the fact that cable providers offer multiple types of cable packages. Person A could be subscribed to a premier cable package with more channels and additional services such as HBO, Showtime, et cetera. In contrast, person B could be subscribed to a basic cable package with no additional services. As a result, one person's cable bill is typically different than another, which is why we cannot provide a specific monthly PEG charge but an approximate. Therefore, the approximate monthly PEG charge for a cable customer is one dollar and sixty cents per month. We also now know that the approximate combined customer base is two thousand seven hundred and sixty. So what is the value in collecting PEG fees? Unfortunately, none of us anticipated the two thousand and twenty pandemic, but it did offer us new insight.
We're going to pass that slide here.
Waiting on a comment.
It's horrible. Lose it, man.
We got the good side. Unfortunately, none of us anticipated the two thousand and twenty pandemic, but it did offer us new insight as to how the influence of video programming can enable us to reach our target audience in a time of social distancing. The image in front of you is one of many interviews and videos we filmed within the council chamber. We also had numerous requests from outside entities to use our facilities. For example, we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and Parker County, to name a few. As a result, cable customers were able to receive even more information related to the pandemic. All of this would have been impossible without the investment in video production, and it allowed us to work with other community groups to spread a message. So how have we spent our PEG collections? Our current improvements have focused on the council chamber, since all major municipal decisions are made within these four halls. For our viewers at home, this is the council chamber that we're in tonight. We felt it important to improve the infrastructure and space so that viewers at home get the best experience when viewing not only our city council meeting, but all of our boarded commission meetings as well. This includes enhancing items such as audio, scheduling software, and backend equipment. One key improvement that I would like to point out is the ability for us to provide third-party video and audio feeds to news stations. This is important because it further allows us to transmit video efficiently when needed. Other items we have improved primarily focus on enhancing viewer experience for cable customers, but it also enables us to support networked communications. Technology changes yearly, and the value in PEG revenue increases. Within five years, we have seen television technology transition from ten eighty to four K quality. Why is this important to recognize? It's important because when technology changes, so does. It's important because when technology changes, so does the equipment used to capture our footage. Equipment like we use during and are still using now during the pandemic within this room. On this slide, you will notice our future and in-process improvements. All in all, once complete, this council chamber will be fully equipped for us to easily and effectively develop video production when needed for our customers, similar to a studio. The items that have a question mark are items we are still researching and have not made a determination on at this time. And lastly, here's a snapshot of our actual expenditures as of August seventeenth. That total is $16,013. We have encumbered $20,394 with our expenses at $36,407. We have $2,616, $2,616.50 available today, and we project to have $16,592 at fiscal year end. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions at this time that any of you may have, and I hope the information presented has been beneficial in answering those loose ends that we had last year when we didn't have our data.
Questions from Mr. Rexro.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing back the information. I know I had a lot of questions for you last year, and I know I kind of gave you a little grief for a year about this. Been fun. I hate to not have something to hold over your head for another year. But I will say, you know, my thought process on this is you have, you guys have done a good job. I mean, you can, you can watch our meetings online and on the cable network, and you can see a better quality than what you see in a lot of other, of the similar type settings. I think sound quality is better, picture quality is better. It allows you to be part of the meeting much better. So I say good job with what you're doing. Keep going forward. I will, I will say that, you know, part of the problem I had was, you know, last year I was just saying, if we're going to fund you, let's just fund you. Let's not add another fee. I've thought about a lot of that over the year, too. And to be honest with you, it's, it's better to have a pay, pay-for-service process than it is to have a taxing service. If I get broke and have to cut something out, I can cut my internet bill out. I can't cut my property tax out, so I think that's, it's better to have it established that way. So keep up the good work and got my vote this year.
Yeah, when you made the original presentation last year, there were so much, so many things that weren't known, and appreciate you bringing that back. Excellent presentation. But it's almost like you were a fortune teller. I mean, who, who would have ever known the importance and the impact and the adaptation that the technology department and, and your department had to do really on a day-by-day basis and so quickly? And so, thank you, and we know that the ability is going to continue to improve and our versatility and ability to broadcast to our clients, our customers, and so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Item ten, future agenda items. Anybody? Mr. Hultop, anything from you, sir?
I have none.
Do you adopt that cat yet?
He's on the way.
Okay. Item eleven is work session, work session items, eleven A, budget work session to discuss the fiscal year twenty one city manager's proposed budget. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Jessica Doss, Finance Director. So tonight, we will hold a budget work session, tenure discussion, FY20 proposed budget and the tax rate. So on the last presentation, there was a slide that referenced our property tax in relation to the average rates in Parker County, in the mid-cities, and average rates for all cities in the state. I wanted to expand on that a little bit tonight. So I compared the tax rates, our tax rate, to other cities around the matrix that are comparable in size, location, and/or amenities. As you can see on the graph, the city of Weatherford's tax rate is among the lowest, with only the city of Alita with a lower property tax rate. While the slide shows our current and proposed FY21 property tax rate, I just want to remind you that our proposed budget is based on a rate of 48.29 cents, a decrease of 1%. So looking at two moderately priced home values of $150,000 and $175,000, the 1% decrease in property tax rates would equate to an annual savings of $7.50 for a home value at $150,000 and a savings of $8.75 for a home value around $175,000. So with the tax rate of 48.29 cents, our budget is balanced. We are providing quality and consistent services at a competitive value. We are continuing to reserve funds for our capital needs, and we demonstrate conservative fiscal management. The FY21 proposed budget is made up of 40 million, 300,000, million, sorry, 40.3 million dollars with an increase, which is an increase of $688,000 or 1.7% from FY20's budget. This total includes expenses such as personnel increases, funding for the downtown project, renovations to city facilities, and economic development agreements. Included in the general fund are one-time expenditures totaling 1.1 million. On an ongoing basis, the fund is balanced with an operating surplus of $79,000. We are proposing to end with 142.52 days of working capital, which is well beyond the council-preferred 120-day reserve. And so with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to you for any discussion on this item.
Discussion, questions, council?
I would like to discuss the tax rate and my proposal with.
Absolutely. We'd love to hear about that. Please do.
If you're in agreement with that right now. Back to the, thanks. I want to start out with the fact that, you know, we're in a pandemic, and I recognize that. I, I recognize also that next year and the year after that might be a little worse than it is right now, because right now people are able to get their unemployment, get their, their check from the government. I want you to try to, to look at this as something, not just I'm going to save our customer or our citizen $8.75 this year. I want you to look at this as something that I'm trying to save our customer $8.75 for many, many years to come. So with that, I say that we have an opportunity here. Even in the worst of times, this city, thanks to the wonderful councils that have come before us, have put this city in a very good position. We are financially in a very good position. We really are the greatest city to live in, in the world. So with, we have an opportunity where people want to come to Weatherford because we are in a good financial position, because we offer valuable things to our citizens, and because they aren't paying enormous property taxes where there's only one our size that is, is lower than us. So with that in mind, we talk about things that are on the horizon. There are several economic development assets and opportunities that are on the horizon that could help disperse the property tax base. So in other words, help create more property tax into our city that would help disperse our, everyone's, every citizen's obligation. So I'd like for you to think about assigning this 1% to an asset fund dedicated to controlling our own future, to being able to disperse the property tax liability for all the citizens by using this 1% and dedicating it each year to just that, creating opportunities for this city to go out and generate the revenue we need to revenue to be able to continue to lower taxes, to be able to continue to keep that tax as low as, as possible. That, that's what I would like for you to consider, not just giving the property tax owner an $8.75 reduction this year, but to use that for every property tax owner to participate and use that $8.75 to go out there and develop asset generating and tax-dispersing opportunities. You, you are giving the taxpayer, I'm not sure it's going to do any taxpayer a whole lot of good, $8.75, but, but what we all can participate is looking at the future like, like the councils before us, not just looking at today and the hardships we face, but looking at opportunities and our future to save for our grandchildren.
Well said, well said. Any questions or comments on this? This certainly isn't, I don't believe that this is a decision that we need to make this evening. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I would say something. Very respectfully to what Heidi said, and when it comes to financial matters, I have the utmost respect for Heidi. She, she's brilliant. The only thing that I would say is that our city staff has prepared a budget that they feel very good about. We're in excess of 20 days beyond what our requirement is for cash reserves, and it comes in at a tax rate that is, for the first time in the 10 years that, that I've been here, even though it's a tiny amount to say, we're actually lowering the tax rate. And that's below the effective tax rate. And I know that's an old term now. And, and that feels good to be able to say that our city staff did things differently this year. And by doing things differently with a real focus on the potential issues that are facing us financially, the way that they're going to spend even the budgeted funds with cuts in personnel that have been done to get us in the position to be able to weather the potential, the storm that we've had and the potential ongoing storm. And they came in and said, hey, we can do everything we need to do, and here's our tax rate. It just feels good to be able to, to look a citizen in the eye and say, you know, our tax rate is literally less than it was. Your tax, not, not just the rate, because sometimes the rate is less, but property values have gone up, and they're, they're going to pay more, but they're, literally, most people would pay a little bit less tax. And the $8.75 or $7.50, those are, I mean, there's going to be people that it's less than that, and there's going to be people that it's going to be well more than that. But just the principle of being able to say that we, we cut taxes, I thought was a really good statement with what we're going through right now.
Other comments?
Oh, I would have to say along the same time, same, same lines as, as Jeff, and so this, this budget that we have right now, I think still accomplishes the goal, because I think the goal you have is a very good goal, and I think you're absolutely right. I think the idea of leveraging the money that we have to offset property taxes through investments to get our sales tax revenue driven up is, is, is a huge benefit, and it's, it's shown to work. I mean, this budget is proof positive that that concept works. The only thing I differ with you on is, is there's no, I don't feel that there's a need to add that. I feel like that your goal is still being met with the current proposed budget. I still see that there's money in, in economic development that's going in, there's things to put in for incentives with the increases that we've had, even cutting the tax rate. We're still leveraging ourself and leaving ourself the ability to leverage money in the future if needed. So I think your goal is honorable, and I think your goal is what has got us to the position that we're in. I just don't think it, it requires that extra tax money to get there. Just my thought.
I would just say that I've discussed this with our CFO and with Jessica. You know, we, we, we put a lot of, there are several projects that are coming online that are, if we had the ability to not just voice air or hot air, we could actually create an asset investment that is a vehicle, that is a money-producing vehicle versus what the general fund normally is. And the general fund normally isn't the business side of the house. This budget does accomplish a majority of that, but the ability to use that 1% in a very defined way as an asset tool that is a generating tool versus the general fund being more of a fund that is dependent on property taxes and dependent on sales taxes and doesn't really give us the control as a community to focus where we need to focus. We don't have that money in this budget. Now, I, again, yes, I've discussed on ways to do that for the next budget, but in this budget, am I correct in that statement, Jessica? Thank you. We do not have the goal that I am trying to, I want very much to say we're lowering taxes, absolutely do. But I also want to say, Mr. Citizen, for the next 10 years, for the next 15 years, I'm going to try to keep your property taxes just as absolutely low as possible and create a mechanism that allows us to control our future. This budget does everything we've ever asked the staff to do, and is a terrific budget. That 1% is something that will allow us in the future to really control our own destiny as a city.
What does that number, what does that total number come up to?
The difference about $140,000.
$140,000. I, I would argue that if we needed to find $140,000 in this budget to do something specifically, we could.
I'm not sure that's our job, but.
Let me, let me say this, because I, I see both sides, and, and this is a decision we have to make. But I, I do want to say that the position that we're in today is because of courageous, forward-thinking decisions that previous councils have made. Is that now this budget cycle? I, I don't know that it is or it isn't. There's, there's more time to think up at that and discuss that. It's, it's a group collectively in public meetings. On the other side of that, go back one slide, please. One more, I'm sorry, the one that shows the household savings. I'm going to be realistic. You know, we, we take action, say, hey, we drop taxes, but $8 a year? I don't know that any economist would say that that's going to boost anybody's economy in their home, but it's the principle of, you know what, during tough times, we're trying to be so physically responsible and drop your taxes. So I, I see both sides, and I think that's the mayor's job, is to make sure that everybody's side is heard respectfully, and we're doing that. I think it's more than anything, we're all believing the concept. It's a timing issue, is this the right time and the right way? And Mr. Tiscus, I didn't ask if you had any comments or opinions.
And, and I would echo a lot of what you said. For, for me personally, it's.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
For me personally, it's, it's more about the principle than the dollar amount. It's, it's the principle of, of the issue. In, in tough times, I think we have to look for ways to tighten our belts, and I'm just not sure, I'm not sure the timing is right for this, although it, it makes a lot of sense. But, you know, all of our citizens have had to tighten their belts and their businesses and in their personal expenses. We, even though it, it's a relatively small amount, I think it's the principle of, of the issue for me.
And, and just to kind of wrap it up, unless you'll have other comments, we will have a report coming. I think we requested that from our county judge, reporting back to us on economic development. They do receive a half cent of our sales tax dollars, the county does, for economic development and other things. We'll be getting a report back on that. If this does not something we move forward this time, maybe we can exercise making sure we're getting the most for our dollar or our half cent out of that partnership, too. Or maybe it's something eventually we could do in conjunction. I'm just throwing that out there. Any other comments before we move on? I think it's a healthy conversation.
I had a few other comments.
Yes, sir.
Number one, could you go back to the slide where it showed that we were in second place for a second? I would like to point out that I believe we were actually in first place, because the only one that beat us does not have a police department. So just like to point out that that is not a whole lot cheaper than us, and we provide two very key pieces that are, that offset that. So for us to offer those in that list and still be at the bottom is pretty impressive. Second question I had in, in, are we, when you say move on, are you wanting to move on past, are you wanting to move on past the conversation that Heidi has, or just to the next topic?
No, no. I just want to make sure I didn't, every time she comes up to do a presentation, I, I try to conclude before she's finished. And I'm determined not to do that this time.
Okay.
So I was just making sure.
I had another item that I wanted to kind of discuss real quick and kind of go over was our fleet rotation fund. In our fleet rotation fund, the goal, my understanding, the goal is to, as we add on new, as we add on new vehicles, we capture that cost, divide it up in the lifespan of the vehicle, then what each department sets aside that amount, so that at the end of life, that vehicle can be replaced in our current budget and not have to do the one-time expenses.
That is correct.
That's the way it's set up. That's the way it's set up. I know every vehicle has a different lifespan, so I was trying to kind of get a grasp of where we were at in that process, so, excuse me. Trying to get a grasp of where we're at in that process as far as how much vehicles, how many vehicles we have captured in that. It looks like, according to budget, we have 46 vehicles captured in that rotation. And each one of them, it says it brings in $475,000 annually is set aside for that vehicle replacement. So that totals up to, we get about, if you have a five-year average lifespan, and I don't know what the average lifespan of apparatuses are, but it totals out to where you have about $51,000 per vehicle to replace it at the end of five years. I would assume that fire apparatuses, things like that, probably go considerably longer, and there are higher-end purchases, and then police cars probably get beat up pretty quick and go through. Do you know, is that, is that a realistic estimate that we have about $51,000 over five years for each vehicle to replace? Does that really cover, is the rotation being covered well, or is that need-
Yes, the rotation is being covered for the vehicles we currently.
Okay.
So we do not have a lot of the vehicles on there, and that's one thing we're hoping to do over a three, five-year plan, is kind of put all of the city vehicles on a rotation plan. So the fire apparatus, the one we just replaced, this year actually, the new engine, was, I believe it's on a 15-year.
15, oh, okay.
Yeah. And then the police vehicles, we do, I believe, on a either four or five-year rotation.
That's a long lifespan for one of those units, though.
Yeah.
Five-year on a vehicle that's driven every day, 12 hours a day, or even longer.
Yeah, I believe right now that's, and we can definitely adjust it. We can get apartment, what they would recommend.
And so the only reason I asked the question is because we know what the intent of it is. The intent is, end of life, expected eight years, five years, 10 years, whatever that is, the money is there. And I was just doing it on a five-year, which probably didn't, 46 vehicles, 475, I don't know what those 46 vehicles, I don't know if we have all of our bigger, higher pieces on that already or don't. But to me, at a five-year rotation, it only left you with $51,000 per vehicle, which to me screams, we're probably not quite putting enough money to that replacement. And I just want to make sure that we are being cognitive of what that actual cost is going to be, and that we are, if we're not there, which is perfectly fine to not be there, because it's the direction we're heading, but that we're making some significant steps to getting closer to that true replacement.
We do have a very detailed list as far as how we got to that number, as far as what we're putting back. I mean, there's a couple items on there that are like a Parks tractor, that is closer to the 12 to $15,000 range. So there's a pretty wide spectrum as far as the vehicles and the equipment that's put on the vehicle rotation plan right now.
Okay. What's your confidence level on the current plan and where you're headed over the next two, three, four, five years? You comfortable with that?
I'd like to see a little bit more put back as far as the replacement. I mean, they go in a lot of ways. So for example, like this year, we have a lot of police vehicles on there, and then I think we have a lot next year, and then it kind of drops off. So there's not, it's not very flat as far as the dollars available each year.
And that was, and that's kind of what was running through my mind, is talk about one-time expenses. We always tag that as a new purchase, and, you know, and it might not be this year, it might be next year or the year after at some point in time. If we notice that that is getting skewed, the numbers aren't really lining up to where our replacement's actually going to replace our stuff, then instead of maybe a new purchase, maybe we need to take some of that access and stick it over into the replacement fund and tag it in there to bump that account up, so that we actually start hitting closer to our true replacement costs and timelines. Just a thought.
That's a great point. Great thought process. Any other comments or questions?
So at our next meeting, I do have something else. So our next meeting, we will have two public hearings on the tax rate and one on the budget. And then September 22nd, we'll plan on adopting the FY21 budget and adoption of the tax rate.
Before you leave, is there any other information that anybody would like to see related to council member or Mayor Pro Tim Wilder's suggestion that would help support your decision in one way or another? Just want to make sure that we are getting the information that we need as individuals to make qualified decisions that are the best, not just today for our citizens, but long-term. Anybody need anything? Next time. If something pops up between now and then, if you please make that request to Mr. Hotop, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We do have one speaker card on the work session item, which we traditionally, that's not been the policy of the council in the past, but I'm going to hear the speaker. Is it Kay Hild? Kay? Come on up, please. Kay, I'm going to be real specific with you, because we normally do this, you're going to get three minutes once you get up and get settled, okay? So once you get up, we have your name and address, and appreciate you being here, appreciate your willingness to come up and share your thoughts on our budget and tax rate. And so if we could have your name and address, and then we'll give you three minutes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Kay Hild. I live at 101 Misty Ridge Lane, Weatherford, Texas. And I just have one comment I wanted to make was, if we're going down on the taxes there, how come we're going up on the college taxes? That was all I wanted to say.
Yeah, well, just to answer that, Ms. Hild, this is the city council, and we don't have any correlation or overlap with the Weatherford College Board. That'd be a question you'd want to address with them.
Okay, then I'd like to make one more comment.
Sure, absolutely.
When you people talk with those masks on, it's, to me, it sounds like a Charlie Brown teacher, wah, wah, wah. I can't understand, and I really want to hear what they're saying.
But everybody says we look better with them on than off, so we don't know what to do. So we appreciate your feedback, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hild. All right, anything else on the work sessions, Council, before we move forward? Okay. Item 12 on the agenda, citizen comments on non-agenda items. Anybody? Seeing none. Item 13 is adjournment, which is always popular. Motion for adjournment by Matt Tiscus, second by Kevin Cleveland. Any discussion before we call for a vote? Call for a vote at this time on adjournment. Indicate yea or nay, please. Council is adjourned at 7:47.